Welcome, everyone. Before we get started, I would await a motion to close the non-public and to seal the minutes.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, if we could have a roll call.
Mayor McCackren.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Here.
Counselor Taber.
Here.
Counselor Denton.
Here.
Counselor Moreau.
Here.
Counselor Bagley.
Here.
Counsel Lombardi.
Here.
Counsel Blaylaw.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Thank you, Kelly.
Welcome.
And before we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd just like everyone to hold in their hearts for a moment of silence for the victims of Hurricane Ian. There's a lot of folks in our region that make it down there to Florida, and what we've seen from there has been truly devastating. So a moment of silence. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
We have two proclamations this evening. First is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the nation has observed Breast Cancer Month since 1985 to call attention to a cancer that touches so many lives and may affect nearly 350,000 women in the U.S. this year, and whereas this month is a time to celebrate the fact that there is now a 90% five-year survival rate for all stages of breast cancer and to support continued research and treatment efforts, while one in eight women still develop breast cancer at one point during her lifetime, and whereas there are more than 3.9 million survivors of breast cancer in the United States, and thanks to improvements in treatment, the number of breast cancer survivors is expected to increase, meaning those survivors will live for many years after their diagnosis, and whereas increased breast cancer screening increases early detection, reduces death, increases life expectancy, decreases late-stage cancer diagnoses, and increases survival rates, and whereas the American Cancer Society Susan G. Komen for a Cure and the Go Pink October Campaign is designed to raise awareness, advocate funding for research, promote early screening, and honor those affected by breast cancer, and whereas we salute all the women among us who have courageously fought their battles and continued unflagging efforts by those committed to the prize of ending cancer in our time. Now, therefore, I, Daglan McCackren, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the City Council and citizens of Portsmouth, do hereby proclaim October 2022 in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, given with my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on this third day of October 2022. Thank you. And do we have, we will mail that out to those that are, and do we have members from Haven here today? We do. Okay. So we're also celebrating and raising awareness of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas October was declared National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in 1987 because domestic violence is prevalent in every community and affects all people regardless of age, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or nationality, and whereas we know sadly that every minute an average of 20 Americans experience domestic violence, 10 million Americans, including millions of children a year, and that one in every three women and one in every four men suffers from domestic violence in their lifetime, and whereas all domestic violence incidents affect every person within a home with long-lasting negative effects, particularly on children's emotional well-being and their social and economic functioning, and whereas here in Portsmouth since 2015, when a safe place and sexual assault support services officially emerged into one nonprofit organization, Haven, has provided support services and prevention education to those impacted by domestic and sexual violence, and whereas we share vision of Haven to end violence and change lives and applaud their strong history of producing positive results, along with our own police departments, schools, and healthcare providers, who are our own sentries on the front lines of looking out for possible victims of domestic violence, and whereas we want to remind everyone that confidential local help is available 24 hours a day at the Haven Violence Prevention and Support Hotline 603-994-SAFE. Now, therefore, I, Daglan McCackren, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the City Council and citizens of Portsmouth, do hereby proclaim October 2022 in Portsmouth as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and call upon the residents of Portsmouth to learn more about this problem, the help available to victims, and how to be part of the solution to ending this tragedy, given with my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on this third day of October 2022. I would ask the members of Haven to come up, and I'm going to be proud to pass along this proclamation. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you so much. This is Laura's picture. Next up, there's one typo in the next Recognitions and Volunteer Committee reports, and that typo is mine because I make the agenda, and so, but it says Recognition of Former State Representative Laura Panalakis. Her term does not actually end in December, so we can't call her former yet, but I am so proud. And honestly, this is one of the things that, it's just cool. On behalf of the entire city of Portsmouth, I get to say thank you to my friend, to somebody I've looked up to my entire life for her 44 years of service to our city as a state representative. There are so many people with so many thoughts about politicians, and I just wish that everyone could sit in Laura's living room and talk about why she serves the people, and this is servant leadership. She's served us for 44 years, and as I said in the vestibule, it's not about the fact that she's served her 44 years in the state legislature, she's served on this dais, she actually started the fire commission, it's all about the quality of work that she's produced. And you're only good as a legislature is if you have the respect of those that you serve alongside with, certainly in your party, but across the aisle as well, and Laura was and is remarkably effective at just cutting through the BS and getting good legislation done for the residents of Portsmouth, the residents of my neighborhood, and it's something else. We're not going to see anything like it. I can't imagine seeing anything like it. So I have some gifts for you in here, and I would just like to call out two of them. First is, I'm going to come down and give it to you, it's the seal of the City of Portsmouth and our challenge coin, the City of the Open Door. Laura, you've kept the door open for so many people across so many walks of life that I hope that one of your grandkids steals this and brings it into school and tells the teacher in show and tell everything about it. And the second, you've done a great job of holding the door open for other people, so we have this doorstop made, City of the Open Door, just as a reflection of all the hard work that you've put in. I don't expect the hard work to stop, but when you prop open the door, remember that the City of Portsmouth is behind you and has very much cherished all the work that you've done on behalf of us. So I'm going to come down and give you this, and if you want to say a few words, we're not putting the timer on. Boy.
First, I'd like to thank the City Council for doing this. Secondly, I'd like to say that I've had three honors in my lifetime. First was my kids, the second was my children, I mean, my grandchildren and great-grandchildren, and then the honor of the people in Portsmouth sending me to Concord, and it was an honor to me. I felt the same way this past September when we went for veto day, because I did the first day I walked in there. I was very proud, a little clam digger for me in the State House in New Hampshire, and I loved it, and I really thank the people for honoring me. It was my honor to serve them. Thank you very much to everybody.
You were excused, I saw.
Absolutely. I'll say first that, you know, however you're raising your kids, I need to take a couple notes. No way, Tierney or Ray, we're going to sit as quietly as your children, so. Thank you. And have a great night, guys.
Want to say something here? Come on, say what you want. Nothing to say? All right, let's go.
Took that out of order, so.
That's okay. I completely understand. I think you should have.
Wow. That was going to be a quick one. All right. While we are, I forgot for the acceptance of minutes, so I'd wait a motion to approve the acceptance, the minutes of the August 1st, 2022 City Council meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And now, we are on to, oh, we'll get the sheet for public comment. Kelly. All right. First, we have Mark Brighton with the topic of Far Away Galaxy. Look at itself, Mark.
In a galaxy far, far away and a long, long time ago, Attorney Bob Sullivan would give a good talk, a great talk, on conflict of interest. Now, I can only paraphrase it because it was a substantial talk, but what he said in essence was that if you even think you have a conflict, then you shouldn't vote on it. Twice now, Arthur Claw and I have filed ethics complaints against Assistant Mayor Joe Kelly. First was outdoor dining, in which you have a very vested interest, and the second was a gift of parking to Strawberry Bank on whose board you sit. This isn't personal. I like you, and I consider you a friend, but my god, woman, you've got to get a grip on yourself. In each case, you asked Bob what you should do, and so you knew you had a problem. At the end of his spiel, Sully would say, you shouldn't vote, but as always, it's up to the individual. In each case, you chose unethical, you made the unethical choice. Not sure how you live with these choices, but as a friend, I'm worried about you.
Thank you, Mark. Next up, Irish Mike, Park and Downtown Trump Flag Waving, I think. Is Irish Mike here? Right there. And Irish, all right, Mike, would you mind just stating your actual name for the?
Oh, yeah. Everybody knows me as Irish Mike, but my actual name is Michael Haren, and I live in Portsmouth on Archer Street. We were here a couple of weeks ago about the flag waves in Prescott Park, and I think there's been maybe five or six things in the papers saying Trump supporters in the park is an issue. It's not an issue. They passed ordinance downtown where you have to hold your signs and hold your flags. You can't have anything on city property. There's Occupy Portsmouth has violated that order four times. The police have down there to address them, and all the times Mark has been at the park and all the times I've been downtown, I've never had an issue once with the police, not once have they come to address what has been done. But so far, the passing ordinance, you can't have anything on the sidewalk, you can't have anything on city property. Occupy Portsmouth has violated all those ordinance. I've never, I've yet to see anything on the paper about them. I've yet to hear the City Council address those issues. About two months ago, two young girls went downtown, they didn't, they weren't partly Occupy Portsmouth, they weren't there for Trump, they had two signs saying, can we all get along? How about free hugs or something? They got harassed so much, so bad, two weeks in a row, the second week in a row, they were in tears, they left because of people of Occupy Portsmouth, and I've yet to hear the council address those issues. They're hateful, and they're hateful and nasty, and if the City Council is going to address the Trump people in the park, they need to address that issue because they're hateful and nasty. If you don't agree with their issue, I don't have a problem with being there, but there's no reason to be nasty about it, and they're very nasty, and I think it should be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next up is Sue Polidora on the topic of Audit Committee, et cetera.
Hi, Sue Polidora, Middle Street in Portsmouth, and I'm just going to put a few things together. Since a public comment is not allowed on your third reading of the Audit Committed Ordinance, I just thought I'd come to public comments and just let you know that I think that there is very problematic to have an ordinance when you have three city councilors and three members of the community. I'm just concerned, what's going to happen if you have a tie vote? What's going to happen if you can't get a resolution or an agreement between them? Who's going to cast the deciding vote? Would the chair step down and not vote? It's very ambiguous the way it's reading right now. And to be honest with you, it, all I read in that ordinance is that eventually you want to go, do away with this committee for some odd reason. That's what it sounds to me. It's not clear, it's very confusing. And then there is also a recommendation that I don't see it in tonight's agenda, but it's a recommendation from the Governor's Committee, and that it will be coming to you for first reading at some point soon. This recommendation does not commit to change an audit firm or firms, even though it might seem like it does. It instead suggests that changing the makeup of the audit team within that firm is equivalent to changing the audit firm. It does not. By any stretch of the imagination, people are not going to take it like that. It's something that has been written on this, I don't know what to call it, if it's going to be an ordinance or a clarification of what, but it does not change the audit firm by just changing the chairs within the organization. You will still have to, a group of people working with the same company that will report the same findings as the previous 27 audits that they have done with the city. This is not transparency by any set definition of the word. We need a new slash different set of eyes looking at our financial reports. The City of Portsmouth should expect that from you, you should expect that from yourself. For 27 years, you're not going to do anything other than just put more roadblocks? How is that going to benefit anybody? Doesn't benefit the cities, doesn't benefit the staff that they're being looked at with some kind of shadowy representation when there's probably none, but after 27 years, I've spoken with many people who had high positions in the financial industry. Nobody keeps a firm for more than seven years. For obvious reasons, the city shouldn't either. Thank you.
Perfect timing, right under the wire. Thank you, Sue. Next up is Chris White on the topic of the Audit Committee.
I am Chris White, currently the Chair at the Audit Committee. I live at 28 Porter Street. Thank you, Mayor McCackren, and the City Council for the opportunity to speak. I am amazed at the lengths to which you and the city staff will go to amend last year's ordinance, 1.414 Audit Committee. All of this seems to be to make the Audit Committee more agreeable with your notion of how an independent auditor should be found. I say, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. The previous ordinance wasn't perfect. It was created with loss of blood, sweat, and tears, but it did work. Earlier this year, for example, earlier this year, the Audit Committee received two proposals, one from Melanson and one from CLA. By his own admission, Counselor Taber said CLA was technically superior. On its face, the CLA proposal was about 10% more expensive, but on an apples-to-apples basis, the CLA staffing horsepower far exceeded Melanson's and was therefore, in actuality, cheaper. The Audit Committee voted 3-0 in favor of CLA. The two councilors, Taber and Cook, abstained for reasons that to this day I find confounding, inventive, and laughable. I, as Chair, was never permitted by staff or the City Council to fulfill my legal duty to recommend the auditor. The Audit Committee could never state in closed session with you or publicly that we recommended CLA over Melanson. The funny thing is that it was your legal option for you, the council, to accept our recommendation, hear it, and then do whatever you wanted with it. Instead, you subjected us to a twisted process that would make a pretzel proud. And you chose Melanson, not CLA. Fine, that was your prerogative, but it was as if you were embarrassed to do so and had to blame me or the Audit Committee for why you couldn't choose CLA. With such a lack of courage, you have created a real mess. I say, stand up for your decision. Don't blame others. Don't be a victim. Provide leadership. Tell the public that you would go against the Audit Committee recommendation and hire the same auditor for the 27th year, and then take the consequences. Do these things instead of this ridiculous, convoluted, rabbit-hole charade that yields only more of a mess. Good governance, a loanee.
Thank you, Chris. Next up is Francis Cormier on the topic of Prescott Park.
Francis Cormier, Melbourne Street, Portsmouth. I noticed you put up a picture on the building there in Prescott Park, what your plans to completely renovate the park. I like Prescott Park the way it is. To me, it's good enough, but it seems like you want to spend a lot of money, you know, transforming the park, and all under the guise of the ocean's rising. If you take a walk down Mechanic Street, right next to Gino's Chowder House, there's a little red building there, like a little barn, that's a boathouse. That was put there so you could pull a boat out of the water during an astronomical high tide, and the way it is today, and that's been there for probably 100 years, the way it is today, you could still just barely pull a boat out of the water into the boathouse at an astronomical high tide. And this whole idea of the rising ocean, did anyone ever talk to, you know, certain families that have been lobstering on that river for generations? And they'll tell you, the water level is the same as it's been back in the early '60s. And I was talking to a man today who's been in his 80s, and he used to work at the Navy Yard, and he talked about the granite steps at Prescott Park. There's those granite steps going down into the water. a little red building there, like a little barn, that's a boathouse. That was put there so you could pull a boat out of the water during an astronomical high tide. And the way it is today, and that's been there for probably 100 years, the way it is today, you could still just barely pull a boat out of the water into the boathouse at an astronomical high tide. And this whole idea of the rising ocean, did anyone ever talk to, you know, certain families that have been lobstering on that river for generations? And they'll tell you, the water level is the same as it's been back in the, in the early 60s. And I was talking to a man today who, who's been in his 80s, and he used to work at the Navy Odd, and he talked about the granite steps at Prescott Park. There's those granite steps going down into the water. He says they're right, the water level is right where it's always been. So it seems like you always gotta have an excuse to spend millions of dollars when, when evidence, there's evidence contrary to what we're getting from the federal government telling us that the ocean's rising. I, I think it's easy to look into when you can get pictures of the launchings of the Thresher back in the 60s, and you can see the high watermark on the shipways, and all that is, is, would be evidence to me, instead of spending money, all this millions and millions of dollars, which is unnecessary. If the ocean's rising, why did President Obama spend $15 million to buy a camp lot that's right at sea level in Martha's Vineyard if it's gonna be underwater in 10 years? Because he knows it's a hoax. He knows it's baloney because he was president. It's a manipulation tool to lead the people.
Thank you, Francis. Next up, Pete Rahuda on the topic of audit committee.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Pete Rahuda, 280 South Street. Since there was no public hearing, even though you removed over two-thirds of the original audit ordinance, I will address the significant changes made by the city council before the last meeting. One, removed the statement, "All members shall be independent of city management and the auditing firm and need to maintain their independence through the duration of their term." Why did you remove this statement considered best practices by the GFOA? Why did you remove any reference to the items, to the terms of volunteer citizens? Defining members' terms is a standard practice on every other board and every other committee, except for the audit committee. Why? Next part, after adding another city councillor, then dictating to only the audit committee that with a city councillor selected by a majority vote of the voting members of the audit committee should be chair. No other committee is dictated to have a city councillor as chair. None. Why is there such a blatant bias by this city council to have the audit committee operate under a different set of rules than every other board and committee? The majority of the boards and committees are chaired by volunteer resident experts selected by members of that committee, based on that member's level of knowledge and expertise. Even the draft of the new park committee that was discussed by the governance committee on Wednesday states the park committee shall be chaired by a member of a local arts community. Yes, a volunteer with expertise in that area, unlike the audit committee. I would ask, are all boards and committees going to be dictated by this council to have a city councillor as chair, or where the chair of the committee has more expertise than the city staff and the city council, enabling the management staff to continue to interfere in the entire process and insert themselves into every step? Need more examples of boards and committees? I've got them. Look at the most recent audit committee example. The posted latest RFP was materially changed, but was not even discussed or reviewed with the audit committee before posting. Since all of your other attempts to remove the audit chair did not achieve the desired results, you have put this bias out for all, to be displayed for all. Next, Part B, the ironic addition of the audit committee will be able to retain the services of professionals as necessary. What a flip-flop. And if I believe, if I was correct, Mr. Mayor, you and two other councilors were part of the first hacking of this, to authorize the audit committee to engage in services of financial experts to fulfill their duties, stating it would give the audit committee too much power. But now magically, it reappears. So management can hire outside consultants when the resident volunteers are for free. So please bring back the resident and taxpayer confidence by showing us the city council is not singling out the audit committee with this blatant bias to keep the old status quo by maintaining, quo maintained for 27 years. So, Mr. Mayor, how do we get to yes for the residents and taxpayers?
Thank you.
I asked you to, to put this back and consider exactly what is happening here. This is setting a precedent for all our committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete Rahuda. Next up, we have Liza Hewitt on the topic of the audit committee.
Good evening. My name is Liza Hewitt, and I live at 726 Middle Road. I'm here to speak about the revisions to the audit committee being voted on tonight. I am very happy to hear that you have rethought the idea of removing the resident members from the audit committee. I'm also happy to hear that the resident members of the audit committee will retain their ability to vote. Considering removing the ability to vote on the committee by the only members of the committee that have any background in finance didn't make much sense. But now we come to the idea of adding a third city council member to the committee and making one of the councilors the chairperson. The revisions to the ordinance in tonight's packet state that, quote, "The audit committee members who are not city councilors shall possess experience in finance, accounting, auditing, and/or financial management and reporting," end quote. I see nowhere in the ordinance revision a description of the qualifications and finance ability necessary for city councilors to sit on the audit committee. Could this be because none of you, the current councilors, have financial experience? So if you apply the same qualifications you are requiring for resident members to the city councilors, there would be no councilors on the committee at all. The question becomes, why is it necessary to add yet another councillor with no financial background to the existing structure and then to make one of the councilors the committee chairperson? I will not say this is a stupid idea. I will just say it's not very bright. Tonight, do not vote in favor of increasing the number of city council members on the audit committee from the current two councilors to the proposed three councilors. Do not vote to require the audit committee chairperson to be a city councillor. Do not vote in favor of the proposed audit committee ordinance changes as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Liza. Next up, Esther Kennedy on the topic of, audit, I can't read it, sorry.
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. First, I want to thank, I brought up about the skateboard park, had a nice conversation with the mayor, and I'm interested in hearing what Mr. Blalock, or Councilor Blalock's gonna have to say, but I'm glad to hear from the mayor that we're gonna be breaking ground in spring of 2023. Second, we've had a rash of issues in our cemeteries. And I would like to know what it will take to put cameras up in the cemeteries, especially in some of our more historical areas of our cemeteries, to make sure that we can monitor and watch what is happening to the precious history that lies there. I know how much it takes to put cameras up on a marina, and it's not very much. So my question to all of you is, what do we need to do? Do you need citizens' help, or do you, can you get it so it can happen, so we can monitor these cemeteries and make sure what happened that was on WMUR, so everyone could see it, to the gravestones, does not happen again? So I implore you to do that. Last, the audit committee. I guess I have to ask, what are we covering up? I know citizens are asking that, and watching us speak week after week, time after time, on the audit committee. And when I looked at it and read it, I was really perplexed that in there, it does not say that we need to go out to bid to groups, new organizations. It says that every five years, you are going to look and make sure that the current audit committee, or audit group that you've hired, just switches people around within their own organization. And that's not what it's about. It's time to change it up, folks. It's time to put it out there to bid. And if we don't put it out there to bid, and we go with the same firm, then we have to ask as citizens, what's happened in the last 27 years that we don't want people to know about? We have to ask that question. I, as a citizen, and other citizens, need to ask that question. So I encourage you to think of your, look at your language, and I agree, ask why you have to have three councilors on it. It's gonna come to you folks anyway, for nine of you to vote on the decision. Two is enough. So again, what are we trying to cover up? Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Next up, Arthur Klau, the topic of, it's all in the resume.
Hello, Arthur Klau, 431 Pleasant Street. As part of my job, because of the level that I'm at in my organization, I do resumes, not resumes, but interviews of people. And sometimes I come across a resume that I realize had some problems with it. If any of you were interviewing somebody for a job and they lied on your resume, how many of you, by show of hands, would not hire the person?
This is not an interactive.
For the record, nobody raised their hands.
This is not an interactive question.
You're interacting right now.
Okay. As the chair of the meeting, I'm telling you the rules of engagement. You're not here to, you're here to share your thoughts, not pose questions.
Can we restart the time? I won't ask any more questions, rhetorical or otherwise. Beverly Mesa Zent, Deputy Director of the Planning Department.
Director.
I may have that position wrong.
You do.
She claims that she worked for the city of Redmond until January of this year. You put it in your press releases, it's on her LinkedIn page, then can you explain to me why, for the city of Wyndham, New Hampshire, she was hired in August of this year, if she was working in Redmond? That's what we call a resume no-no. If you, all you have to do is go to city of Wyndham site, look for her name, and you can find her in a similar position for that city. Now, you would think somebody applying to the city of Portsmouth, if they were gonna come here, would have some in-state experience, and if they did, they would certainly want to share it with the public and with the city. And I noticed that the city manager nodded her head that, yes, she worked at the city of Redmond until January. She agreed by nodding. This is not true. You have somebody who lied on their resume. It's a pretty high position. This is the kind of problem that we have with the city management and the city council. We can't count on your ethics. I mean, we kind of know why, one of the reasons why you, you keep choosing the same audit field is because there's nobody in accounting that, the accounting who can really do the end of year. So they, the audit company comes in, and that's how you get your CAFA report. In fact, it's even in your RFP that you need them for the CAFA report. I don't know what we can do about this council and their lack of ethics, but regarding this resume, I'm not upset that you lied to me. I'm upset that from now on, I can't believe you. Beverly Mesa Zent.
Arthur, thank you. Next up, we have Fred Orlando on the topic of the park.
Thanks, Fred Orlando. I've lived in Portsmouth for a little over six years, and one of the many things that I love about this place is the high level of tolerance and the low level of prejudice and, and how you guys embrace the state's live-free motto. With regard to tolerance, I think Prescott Park is a center where that's often demonstrated. My concern is with the recent issues that have been raised about the flags at Prescott From what I can tell, and trying to inform myself about the issue by reading about it and visiting the park, it seems to me that there is no lack of respect, there is no disruption, and I see it as one of the nice things about this place, that there is a platform for a free exchange of ideas. And I think that that's the way it should be looked at. Prejudice means prejudging, and our society has gotten a lot better at not prejudging people based on their skin color or their stated sexual orientation, but I think we're getting a little bit worse about prejudging people maybe by the police uniform they wear or the political flag or button that they may wear or wave. And that concerns me, especially here, where I think we champion the free exchange of ideas. So I just implore you folks who are in charge of keeping this, the city of the open door, to kind of keep our emotional reflexes in check. And when we see signs where maybe the content triggers a feeling in us, that we look at it not as a, not as what the content of that flag or sign is, but it's a flag of exchanging our ideas, which is a great thing that we do here, and I hope that you folks do everything you can to look at those flags just as that, that they champion the exchange of ideas and, and not let the content influence what seems to be happening at a low level here. I really love it here, and I thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Fred. Next up, Nancy Pearson on public art policies.
Hello, Mayor and Assistant Mayor, and welcome. New city attorney, you're probably not new for you, but you're new to me. Before I begin, I just wanted to thank this council for accepting the bench donation for Vernon. I want to particularly thank the mayor and Councilor Blalock, who spoke at the bench dedication. Councilor Moreau, I saw you there. Councilor Cook, I saw you there as well. His family was so touched and so overjoyed and so proud of what this community did for him, and having you there was so special. So thank you for that. But tonight, I want to talk to you about the thing in your packet that pertains to the revision of some of the public art policies that the governance committee has, has created for you. And I'm, I'm in support of the updates because, well, really for two reasons. One is that Nancy Carmer, who knew everything there was to know about public art in Portsmouth, has gone and with her has gone that knowledge. And the cultural commission, which was Artspeak, which managed all of those policies, is also no longer serving the city. So they were in need of an update, and the, and the committee, the governance committee went through them, all the policies with a fine-tooth comb, to make sure that art acquisitions and referrals and funding opportunities and things that came our way wouldn't start falling through the cracks, which I suspect some things might be in the pipeline because we don't, we don't have any mechanism anymore. So I'm intrigued by the idea of, in lieu of Artspeak, this idea of having a public art committee, and the makeup is the same as it, as it already exists in the existing ordinance that the city already follows. It's just, instead of being a committee under Artspeak, it'll be its own committee. I, I think that's an intriguing idea. I don't think that there's a better idea right now, because I know you have projects that are waiting for this kind of approval. So I hope that I hear a really interesting and lively dialogue, and I hope that overall you accept these recommendations because Portsmouth Public Art is part of our personality, it's part of our history, it's part of our future. So thank you for sharing. And Assistant Mayor, I'm sorry you were spoken to so rudely earlier, and on behalf of everybody who listened, I'm sorry you had to hear that.
Thank you, Nancy. Hey. We don't need the comments from the peanut gallery. Next up, Mark from the Park, Mark Brenner.
Good evening, City Council. Welcome, Ms. Moreau.
Thank you.
And Mayor. Yeah, I believe that you, as a city council.
Sorry, just for the record, name, name and.
Mark Brenner, Mark from the Park, Elliot May.
Thanks.
I believe that you, the city council, just approved Phase 1 of the transformation of the park. Speaking with many of the residents of Portsmouth. Speaking with many of the residents of Portsmouth, they seem not to know about this $15 to $17 million transformation from five years ago. And they have no idea. So five years ago, there was a set cost, or there was a cost, but it's three times that now. And now you want to move the Shaw Building. And rather than move it, I don't know why you just don't put it up and raise it. It'd be a lot cheaper, much cheaper. But you're going to move it now to the street area, and you don't have enough money now to do anything with it. It's just going to sit there empty. It makes no sense. It's just stupid. All right. So anyway, today's dollars is three times. I never saw anybody come back and say, well, the cost of moving this today is going to be this. I don't think I ever saw that. So I'd like to know what's going on here. And, and taxpayers should know about this. I think you should send it out with the tax bills, so that everybody knows what's going on in this city, because nobody seems to know. And you're going to transform that park like there's no tomorrow. You're taking down trees, you're taking out the parking lot. It goes on and on. All you got to do is fix up the fencing, fix up all the walkways, or change the fencing, fix the walkways, and it's a beautiful park. Why do you want to change it? Anyway, what else? Oh, okay, let's go to the auditors. All right. First of all, those are three independent auditors that are highly intelligent, have many years of experience, and they're, they're well-educated in banking, finance, accounting, what you, what have you. And you want to get rid of them. Well, why do you want to get rid of them? Well, you first wanted to get rid of them, but then, because you might have to put the outside auditor out to bed, you want control. So what you're doing is you're putting three of you, who know nothing about some of this stuff, onto a committee. That's not how it should work. Those three auditors should be independent from all of you. And then they report to all of you. And that's the way it's supposed to go. Not putting three of you on a committee, that's ridiculous. Where's the independence? There is none. All right. I'm sure you all have seen the Black Lives Matter painted in the Historic District at 244 Marcy. In fact, Ms. Cook, you're right in that neighborhood. You probably walk by it all the time. Nobody seems to say anything about that. That's okay, but my flags aren't okay. So what's going on with that? All right. How about the drag queen shows at the restaurant over here, where they're doing it in front of children? And they're, they're just prepping our children for the wrong things. And you allow this to happen. It's happening in two venues. It's in the restaurant on Pleasant Street, and it's at the Bow Street Playhouse.
Thank you, Mark.
Oh, I want to keep going.
Oh, that's all the time.
Hey, I'll tell you what, I got an idea. You allow 45 minutes for this venue here, for us to come up and talk.
We allow three minutes.
I know, can I, just one quick question.
Point of order, Your Honor. There's not a dialogue during public comment.
All right, no dialogue.
Especially from audit hunters.
Next up, we have Shane Soderlund.
Soderlund.
Soderlund from...
Yeah, hi. I went by Allen Soul last time. It's kind of a nickname, but I was a little shy, too. First, I want to read this to you. It's, it's important, given the state of our country. Love is patient, love is kind, it does not envy, it does not boast, it is not proud, it does not dishonor others, it is not self-seeking, it is not easily angered, it keeps no record of wrongs. Love does not delight in evil, but rejoices with the truth. It always protects, always trusts, always hopes, and always perseveres. It's 1 Corinthians 13:4 to 7. I had the, the pleasure of sitting with Mark most of the time in the park that he's been here this summer. And as a witness, I never saw Mark instigate one time. I would have left. I wouldn't have stayed. He never accosted anyone. They came to us. I watched people threaten to shoot Mark or heard about it. I watched people get in his face. And I was sad. I saw someone spit on Irish Mike in the square because of his flag choice. I was careful myself to raise neutral flags most of the time I was there, to stay unbiased. But overall, what we need in our country is not a civil war. We need civility. And we have to work as Americans to reclaim some of what we've lost. We have to come together as a people, or we're going to destroy each other eventually. This, this can't be, it, it is viewpoint discrimination. And, and he has a peace, love Trump flag there. And some people think Trump's the worst guy ever, and some people think he's the best guy ever. The same thing with Obama can be said, too. Some people love Obama, some people despise Obama. But at the end of the day, we're all Americans. And William Whipple and people put their lives on the line for freedom of speech. And as long as he's not violating something in the Supreme Court or instigating or something, I don't see a problem with what he's been doing. And I love our country, and I hope that in a, in a city where the, one of the signers of the Declaration of Independence lived, that this city will respect that, too, and remember that at the end of the day, we have to love each other. Otherwise, we're going to go down a dark path as a country, and we don't need to do that. We already did that once, and we came out stronger, but we don't need to do it again. So let's not. Thank you.
All right. Next up is the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask for a, make a motion to suspend the rules to bring Item 15C out of order?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
This is what's under my name, and for the purposes, we have a very short presentation from Ernie Greenslate and Valerie Rochon regarding the Portsmouth 400 Legacy Projects.
Thanks, Councilor Moreau. Mayor McKecon, Assistant Mayor Kelly, City Councilors and City Managers, Manager. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to be here today and present on the PNH 400 Legacy Project. My name is Ernie Greenslate, and I'm the Chair of the Legacy Committee. We also have Valerie Rochon is here today, and also Judy Miller, who is a member of the Legacy Committee. Imagine a public sculpture garden welcoming visitors to Portsmouth as they take the Market Street Gateway from Interstate 95 into the city's downtown. That's the vision of the Portsmouth, New Hampshire 400 Legacy Committee, which is tasked with creating a project that will last well beyond the 400th anniversary in 2023, enriching the city for years to come. Located in the city's already existing Bohanko Gateway Park, this new sculpture garden will have a maritime theme, celebrating the river and all that is connected with it through public art. Just a short walk from downtown, Bohanko Gateway Park links the newly-created vista of the river and the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard on one side of the gateway and the USS Albacore Submarine Memorial on the other. This sculpture garden will attract visitors and residents of our seacoast community to a riverside park, the perfect location for quiet reflection, a family picnic, or educational programs on the city's maritime history. Last winter and spring, members of the PNH 400 Legacy Committee met multiple times with City Manager Karen Conard and city staff to brainstorm ideas for a legacy project that would reflect city priorities and align with ideas that have been shared in public forums to generate community ideas for, for PNH 400. Based on city input and ideas shared at the public forums, PNH 400 decided to move forward with the Bohanko Gateway Park Sculpture Garden. PNH 400 is currently raising funding for one or two initial sculptures from individual and corporate donors and grants. The goal will be to have at least one project installed during the 400th anniversary celebration in 2023. An RFP based on public art guidelines adopted by the city for Artspeak was released in August, and proposals were due in September 23rd. Over 30 artists, many of them local artists, submitted over 40 proposals. A review committee chosen from the community and including expertise in sculpture, design, and public art will review the proposals and select finalists. We're scheduled to announce finalists in the late November. So we are requesting City Council approval for a sculpture garden in Bohanko Gateway Park. This sculpture garden will celebrate Portsmouth's 400th anniversary, its rich maritime history, and its commitment to arts and culture.
Thank you, Ernie. Are there any questions?
I would just like to make my sample motion to move to accept the donation and approve the placement of sculptures to be commissioned by Portsmouth, New Hampshire 400 in the public property known as Bohanko Park.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Blaylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank Councilor Moreau, Counselor Cook, and Ernie for bringing this forward. I understand that we would like to have, we wouldn't want this to be delayed for the Portsmouth 400. And I know we are setting up the process for art, so I know that process hasn't been finalized. But I appreciate you bringing this forward so we don't delay this project.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I actually will echo exactly what Counselor Blaylock said. I think this is a fantastic project. I'm very excited about it. And tonight, I'm bringing forward, from the Governance Committee, a proposal for a public art review committee. But that committee wouldn't be established in time, by any means, to review a project for the Portsmouth 400. And I know that. And what I love about this project is that the Portsmouth 400, in working with the city, is using the exact guidelines that the Governance Committee looked at in adopting, in, in putting forward a motion for a public art review committee. So it's the exact process, and actually, it can serve as a guide for the city in how to review public art projects. So I think that this is a really exciting opportunity on two fronts, not just because the Portsmouth 400 has a legacy project, but also they serve as an example for us when we're looking at public art in the future.
Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Go back to public hearings and vote on ordinances and resolutions. First, we have a public hearing, second reading of ordinances, ordinance, a public hearing, second reading of ordinance, amending Chapter 10, Article 5A, Section 10 dot 5A 21B, amend map for building height standards, incentive overlay district sections 10 dot 5A 21 dot 20, building height standards sections 10 dot 5A 21 dot 21, and 10 dot 5A 21 dot 22, section 10 dot 5A 43 dot 32, building and story heights, section 10 dot 1530, terms of general applicability. First up is a presentation.
Your Honor, Planning Director Beverly Mesa Zent is happy to come forward and give a brief summary, because it could take a whole long time, but I know that her goal is to briefly summarize the changes before you. Also with her is Principal Planner Nick Cracknell, with any questions, as a resource. Thanks, Beverly.
Thank you. So good evening, Mayor and Council. On October 18th, City Council approved the Regulatory Work Plan, I mean, I'm sorry, April 18th. The work plan consisted of three phases. Phase one was code cleanup, having to do with building height standards to improve the regulatory implementation and align with legislative intent of those standards, and eliminate ambiguous sections that result in unintended consequences. Phase two, as you know, are the accessory dwelling unit amendments currently in development. The purpose of those was to remove barriers, expand the number of eligible properties for ADUs and senior housing facilities. And phase three are the incentive amendments, which the purpose for those will be to adjust incentives to place a higher emphasis on workforce housing. At their August 18th, 2022 meeting, the Planning Board recommended amendments that are the subject of the second reading this evening and the public hearing. Consistent with the City Council approved objective for these amendment package, the amendments before you have been developed with the intent of eliminating inconsistencies, correcting errors, and improving the overall structural foundation of the ordinance to ensure that zoning ordinance can be clearly understood by the community, the development community, and consistently implemented by staff. Amendments are focused on two articles in the zoning ordinance. The first article is Article 5A, Character-Based Zoning. Section 10 point 5A 21 point 10 is the contents of the regulating plan. We have, there's a correction to a incorrect citation and reference that's been added to the amendments. There's been a change to add building height standards for Foundry Place in order to provide a building height standard for 66 Rock Street. And there is a modification to building height standards for a small portion of High Street and Haven Court to match the surrounding buildings and associated building, and their associated building height standards. Section 10 5A 2120 is a section on building height standards. A correction there made to make it explicit that within the Historic District, the HDC has jurisdiction over height, scale, and massing of any new construction, and can require, as part of that approval process, a building height less than the maximum permitted. And Section 10 point 5A 43 point 32, building and story heights, is to remove any ambiguity that the maximum building height is assigned to all lot lines fronting a public place, and that cornered through and waterfront lots allow for limited encroachment of a higher building height, provided the taller section of the building are located 50 feet from the lot line or the public place. And there's also a change there to allow for decorative roof, decorative roof appurtenances up to four feet in height to be located along the roof edge. So this is a summary of the changes that are proposed for Article 5A. There are some changes to Article 15 definitions, including, these all directly relate to the changes in 5A, and they're related to building height standards. Amendments to front lot line, penthouse, mantered roof, short story and building height, parapet wall, adding greater clarification and greater implementability of those definitions. And then new definitions for public place, average existing grade, average finished grade, and urban districts where we did not have a definition before. A quick timeline, on May 5th, the Planning Board held a work session to review the proposed amendments. On May 19th, the Planning Board held a public hearing. Revised documents were presented that reflected input that we received from the work session. On June 23rd, the public hearing was continued to the August meeting, with requests that staff schedule, schedule an additional work session, which we did on August 8th, where additional review of the draft amendments took place and additional edits were provided and suggested. The Planning Board continued the public hearing on August 18th and recommended adoption to the Planning Board of the ordinance that you have before you September 19th. This was transmitted to the City Council for a first reading. Again, Nick, Nicholas Cracknell, our Principal Planner, is here also to answer any questions you have. He is the primary author, of course, along with the community, of those amendments that you have before you. And we'll, two of us will be glad to answer any questions you have.
Beverly?
You're welcome.
Counselor Bagley?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for the presentation, Beverly. And I'm going to touch upon a presentation Nick Cracknell gave recently to the Portsmouth Anthem AM about the history of development in Portsmouth. And if I get any of the facts wrong, it's because I misremember them, not because Nick presented them wrong. But what was of interest to me was Portsmouth was the first New Hampshire community to enact Euclid zoning rules, which come from that famous case in Ohio in the 1920s, I believe. And our first two zoning ordinances were enormous books, and both of them were thrown out completely by the state courts as not legal, I believe, in the 1950s or thereabouts. And what I see before me tonight is a lot of hard work that is going towards removing ambiguity. And the reason that's important in zoning is it decreases the chances that the city will have to go to court over zoning decisions. So I think this is a great deal of work that has been done. I'll, I'll support it, and I think it's going to help keep us out of courts.
Counselor Bagley, Counselor Lombardi?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions on the map. And it might be just a pixel thing on the computer, but it looks like there's, on the downtown garage, there's a green, and then it looks like there's yellow behind it, but I don't know if that's accurate.
I can pull it up if it's a little...
There should be no yellow around the garage, the High Hanover Street garage.
I think it's maybe a pixel thing.
It is green along Hanover Street, green along Fleet, green along the lower portion of Haven Court, and then the upper portion of Haven Court down Lad Street is orange.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And then the other question I had was on, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm forgetting the name of the park on, on Lafayette Road.
You don't mean Goodwin Park on Isling?
Goodwin Park, yes.
Okay.
Goodwin Park, yes.
Okay, Islington Street. Correct?
Yeah. And that...
Is blue.
Okay, it looks green on here, so...
It's kind of teal, but it is blue, and it's to match the legend that goes with that map. So the colors should be the same if you dragged it over.
All right. Then the other question I had was more general, and in terms of, one of the disturbing things that I think has happened in the northern tier is that we have a sea of flat-roofed buildings. And I read through this, and I don't know if this will encourage more roof types. I hope it does, rather than just flat-roofed buildings.
I would say it does. Whether we've hit the mark on that particular, remember, this is primarily a code cleanup. It's not about charting a whole lot of new ground, but we have allowed for taller decorative features on even flat-roofed buildings to make them more attractive at the top, like a articulated cornice, something that's heavier, a taller parapet wall. There are examples that we presented to the Planning Board. Right now, you're limited to two feet above the roof line. The proposal is to go to four. We did talk about up to eight, but we settled on four. Penthouses are encouraged to be set back further from the edge of the building and have pitched roofs, not just another flat roof. And in exchange for allowing the height of the penthouse to be treated like all other sloped roofs, which is the midpoint between the top and the bottom of the roofs, they have to, bless you, push it back the 20 feet, not have any rooftop appurtenances on top of it, which today, you can put up to 10 feet of rooftop appurtenances, an elevator overrun, a stairwell, mechanical equipment with a screen. All that's allowed today to go on top of a 50 or 60-foot building downtown. You see lots of that stuff on the roof. It's very visible. So we're trying to push it away from the edge and push it down, so it's not sitting on top of a penthouse. So I'm not going to suggest we've hit every component of livening up the skyline of the city, but I definitely think this is a significant move in the right direction, and Russell Street was a good example, coming before the HDC with the corner building at Russell and Deer. The HDC really wanted to have a taller parapet or a raised cornice at the corner, and they couldn't do it with the two feet, so they're going to be able to do it with the four, should this be adopted, as an example.
Thank you. I think that's good.
Counselor Blak?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank Beverly and Nick for all the work on this. I think this is going to simplify things, save us a little risk, and just clean up. I know this was hard work, but I appreciate it, and I think this is going to allow things easier in the future.
And I would agree, it's been a lot of hard work. We never anticipated, when we went to the Planning Board initially, I didn't, as one of the primary authors, that it's not just fill conditions we're trying to get to with building height and the sort of loophole that's in the code today, where you can put the first floor on the ground, backfill around it, and then start measuring from the filled site to the top of the building. That's what happened down the West End Yards next to Pick 'n Pay or Hannaford Supermarket. That's what happened at 105 Bartlett. That's what happened out at the Westerly. It's happened in many locations. It's not illegal to do it, but it's an artificially tall building that was never the intention of the existing code. So we were thinking, let's go get that, and then when we got to the Planning Board, we got some really good feedback from a couple of Planning Board members that we need to also address cuts, not just fills. So that took us a solid six weeks to go and look at more than a dozen codes across the country to figure out how you deal with cuts, taking soil away and not ending up with too tall a building in that situation. So it was a lot of hard work, but we had a very productive, I think, four months with the Planning Board over four meetings, and certainly, the public input was very helpful along the way.
Thank you.
Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Not to throw Nick under the bus here, but I'm going to remember back to an even earlier presentation you gave, since Counsel Lombardi brought up the North End. And my recollection is that we had a number of, a great deal of citizen engagement in charrettes a number of years ago, and the desire in that area was to have a kind of a tiered structure. And so we crafted, if I don't misrecall, you could have up to seven stories where the AC Hotel is.
Correct.
But then what happens is, due to construction requirements and permits, it doesn't really make sense to build taller than five stories unless you build at least eight. So we kind of created these rules. We envisioned this is what's going to happen, and then it didn't happen, not because the rules weren't there, but because of the economics weren't fully understood. And, you know, the economics are impossible to understand, you know, the price of lumber has doubled and then halved over the last few years, so it's, you know, difficult things to predict. But I just, I think it goes to highlight that even though we put a lot of work and effort into these, no plan is perfect. We're not always going to get the results we expect, but I think the amount of review and dialogue that you guys have put into this with the Planning Board and with citizens is, you know, it should come out very well.
Thank you. Counselor Bagley, Counselor Denton?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question and then a comment. Could you just confirm once more that this is solely housekeeping, and it's not allowing buildings to go additional stories higher?
Yeah, no buildings can go additional stories higher. The only area that the building height map has changed in a substantive manner is to add Foundry Place in, which was not on the ground when this map was created. And Foundry Place right now, for all the DSA or the Rogers lots that run from Wells Fargo all the way around to Bridge Street, all those are currently zoned at 50 feet in height. It's a brown line. They've all gone through the permitting process with the 50-foot brown line, with the ability to go to 60 feet with the incentive overlay district. Again, none of that's changing with this code. But when you get down to the parking garage, or Peter Hapney, who we actually forgot in 2017, he's in the CD 5 district but has no building height assigned to his property at the cul-de-sac where the artwork is in the middle. So we've got somebody orphaned down there that we missed, and we've got the Foundry Place garage with no height on it, but that's consistent with the other 19 municipal properties that currently are down there, that we're proposing to put some building height, some guardrails to the conversation, should the city go forward and change any of the uses on any of those lots. But the Heineman property right now does not have frontage on Foundry Place. There are discussions, as we've come to understand, between the city and Heineman about a small strip where the former, I guess, DPW garage used to sit, where there's still a retaining wall, the back wall of the foundation's still there. The city actually owns property behind Heineman today and in the past. So Heineman does not have any frontage at this time on Foundry Place. But just in case, because there was concern from some people that Heineman might get taller than it currently can, because right now, it's really, it's a two-story building with a mezzanine that's allowed to go to three stories with the green line on the front parking lot next to the church on Pearl Street. We wanted to make sure, even if they purchase that land, they can't raise the height of the Heineman building beyond what they currently have. That's why it changes from brown to green along our property, yours, on Foundry. Hopefully, I haven't lost you.
No.
But that's the Foundry Place piece. The only other adjustment is on High Street and Haven Court, next to the garage. And there were plenty of comments in our review process that, gee, isn't that kind of spot zoning? Isn't that singling somebody out? Because right now, the parking lot behind the former Rudy's next to the garage has a maximum building height of 40 feet and three stories. It's a green line that goes around that. I put it there as part of the big map change back in 2017. I would offer, and I have regularly, that just like we missed Peter Hapney, this is not a big deal, whether this is 40 feet or 45 feet. Everything around that property is 45 feet in the existing code. It's an orange line. Everything on High Street, from Rudy's all the way out to Starbucks, that's all orange. The whole, whatever the name of the building Starbucks is in, that's 45 feet. It's a 45-foot building. So is the front of, it's about 44 feet where the chocolate shop used to be. It changes every six months. The garage is 45 feet. Lad Street's 45 feet on both sides. Even the little federal building that's stranded as an island with the Athenaeum turnaround, that's all 45 feet. So what actually was left out, singled out by me and others that put it together in 2015, the map, was the Rudy's parking lot. So that, all we were trying to do here, I still would offer it as a cleanup, that it be consistent with all the other orange lines around it, and it's a five-foot increase. And as we, and we also put this zoning amendment together prior to that project even being filed, even though this took time to get to the Council, get to the Planning Board, we preceded that project formally submitting an application to the Board of Adjustment. There were questions about, hey, what's the process here? Looks like this is developer-driven. It's not. It is developer-supported, but it's not developer-driven. We drove it. And we drove it to clarify how corner lots get addressed in part of this amendment. And we looked at that zoning map and said, geez, it really should have been 45 feet. All those buildings are connected in the particular plan that's being envisioned. It makes sense for it to be cleaned up and smoothed out. So we're actually fixing what you could probably characterize as a spot zone in 2014 when we put the map together by singling that lot out and treating it differently than every other lot around it that was already on the ground with similar circumstances. Makes sense?
It does. Thank you.
No other changes, though, to building height that are here. It's strapping lines on the municipal properties in those two areas.
And just for a quick comment, I recall voting on the 2017 character-based zoning, and I still hold that I prefer even taller buildings, because that would allow more energy-efficient usage and should be more affordable, but that is not what this does, and I support what this does.
Counselor Denton, any other comments or questions? Nope. Thank you, guys. Next up, we have the public hearing speakers. And in an effort to have as many speakers as would want to speak, we'll offer three minutes for the first, for the first time up, then five minutes, and then if there's nobody else, you have unlimited time after that. In order to cycle through speakers, a public hearing is now open.
And I guess I just really want to say, I was surprised that this didn't go to the HCC in previous changes. That has happened, and to give them input, especially when it covers some of the historical district. I know when, we really talked about a lot about the zoning on the HCC when I was on it, when things would come up. So I was a little shocked by that. But I think you folks, and just hearing Counselor Denton tonight, really needed a side and had public input on what we want the city. What is a city? Is it tall buildings, like Counselor Denton just said? I read a lot of the emails, and even from people that I'm sure were strong supporters of you all, they're questioning some of the infill in the building heights that are potentially being put together and to be brought forward. With all these changes in our zoning, I don't understand why we're not looking at our master plan, why we're not looking at and asking the question, especially with the Portsmouth 400, what do we want Portsmouth to be going forward? Newington just made a really loud statement of what they want Newington to be. And we talk about affordable housing, and many of us had said, what about the mall that's deteriorating? And Newington just said, no. I ask you all, as we go through these zoning changes, to see what other communities are thinking. Newington just gave you their answer. Because we don't really have, unless we want to destroy our historical significance, why people come to Portsmouth? Why do I leave the waterfront of Boston to come up to Portsmouth? What is different? If you can't answer that and keep it different, then we're going to slowly deteriorate. Because with gas prices and ways people are moving these days, they're not going to pay to come. We need to think about what Portsmouth is and what we want Portsmouth. And I'm not here tonight to say Esther Kennedy wants Portsmouth this way. I have an opinion. Obviously, everyone knows I have an opinion. But I want to know what other people think. And in the emails I was reading that you received, they were giving you an opinion about infill in small ADUs. They were giving you opinions about zoning. And maybe it's time to have a charrette and have a discussion, as Counselor Bagley has remembered and brought up tonight, and have a conversation of what's best for Portsmouth. Because now is the time to do it, or else we're going to lose Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Are there any other speakers?
Good evening again, Petra Huda. I just have one question for you. Does this protect our historic character? This is what we need to be thinking about going forward. As Esther mentioned, there is only one reason that people come to Portsmouth. And if we're like every other town with our restaurants and our tall buildings, there's no character that's going to be left. So I believe this is the question that you need to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Are there any other speakers? Are there any second, any second-time speakers? Any third-time speakers? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any additional council questions and deliberations?
I would like to just move to make a motion to move to pass second reading and hold third and final reading at the October 24th, 2022 City Council meeting as presented.
Second. Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm surprised Counselor Denton didn't bring up this fact, but during public comment, you know, there's a lot of talk about historic Portsmouth, and I think it would be who of us to mention that the Heineman Building was long known as the Bricks Motor Building, and it was actually a six-story building until 1925, when there was a massive fire that destroyed over 100 cars in that building. So I think when we talk about the history of Portsmouth, it's important to acknowledge that history is 400 years and then, you know, infinite before settlers came here. So when we talk about the history of Portsmouth, there's time periods that are the history of Portsmouth. We can't, you know, say that there were never any six-story buildings in Portsmouth, because that's not the case. There were, and they were there for a great number of years. And we're changing that history by restricting this to be no more than three stories. So I think we're listening to resident input, but we're also honoring the past with this decision here tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Any other comments? No. I get to read a lot, as Mayor, I get to read a pamphlet from the 300th celebration, and we had the 300th celebration of Portsmouth, and this might be a bit of an exaggeration, but in the pamphlet, they mentioned that Portsmouth at the turn of the 18th century was the 10th largest city in America, with some of the largest buildings. Now, I don't think we're going to go back to those large buildings in the downtown. I don't think we're rivaling any of those, nor do I. I think it would be a good idea to, because the charm, but also the infrastructure to support that, it's difficult, the electrical demands to do that. But what this is, is not that. We've talked way past these ordinances. This is a cleanup in five feet in one area to align it to the other thing. So we've had some pretty large conversations in the future of Portsmouth. The future of Portsmouth is making sure that we have zoning laws that are easily applicable and understandable. That's one of the important things, and I credit Counsel Morrell for a lot of the work, I credit the Planning Board, Chairman Chilman for the work that he's put in on that, and the members of the Planning Board for creating this. I think that, you know, being on the North Mill Pond, one of the largest disputes is, you know, where was the building height coming in? Was it, you know, backfilling? Was it, you know, backfilling that and then creating the building height? So it's about having uniformity. That's how I think we protect all property rights when it comes to future owners and existing owners and their rights as property owners. So I commend the work that has been done on this. I will be supporting it, given that it's an ordinance change. I'd ask for a roll call vote to make sure that we have everybody on the record. Counselor Moro, did you have something to?
No, I thought Counselor Tabor had something to say.
Oh, did you have something to say, Counselor Tabor?
Well, I was also going to support this, and it is, it does three great things, I think. It clarifies the HDC's prerogative over height in the district. It clarifies that height starts at the original grade line, not where it's been filled and added. And that, as we all know, is a 105 Bartlett Street impact for the people across from the Mill Pond looking at that building at its total height. And the Rock Street changes, I think, are terrific and important for that neighborhood. But all, all to the mayor's point that this is clarification, and we've taken what we've learned over the years of form-based zoning since 2017, and we found where we need consistency and we need clarity, and that's what's been added.
All right. Kelly, could you please have a roll call vote?
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Tabor?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Moro?
Yes.
Counselor Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
Yes.
Mayor McKeckren?
Yes.
Ananimos?
We've been here for council picture and representative. Does anybody need to use the restroom now? No?
I can go for a little while longer.
Next up is third and final reading of ordinance, amending Chapter 1, Article 4, Section 1.414, Commissions and Authorities Sample Motion, move to pass third and final reading of the ordinance as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Counselor Moro.
I think that we've had a lot of feedback and a lot of discussion about this, and I know that there were some comments brought up tonight about there being an even amount of counselors as to members of the public. But I look at this as not a group that has to come up with 100% one way or the other. They could be a 50-50 group and bring it to us and argue each side of it, and then we're the ones that are going to make the decision on who we choose in the end. So I don't see it having an even number as being an issue down the road for decision-making purposes.
Any other questions? Counselor Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'll, I'll make a quick comment about having a council member serve as chair. It is true that in not all committees, that is the case. But historically, in some committees, such as Parking, Traffic, and Safety, the council member has served as chair. And I believe the reason for that is, and I'm the current chair, full disclosure, and I'm probably the least qualified of the members to be chair because we have traffic engineer citizens that are on that committee. The reason is, in my opinion, that that's a very political, parking's a tremendously political issue in the city, and people have very strong opinions on it. So it makes sense when there are strong political opinions about things, that somebody that is elected and therefore can be not elected in the future, take the, the lead position. And, and that's why I recommended that for the Audit Committee. It's, it's clear that the, the people of Portsmouth are quite passionate about this committee, and I think it, you know, giving them the, the right to elect or unelect the person that's chair of that committee is, you know, should be up to the voters.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. I did have a one question. I had thought at the last reading and then looking back at the previous, I thought that we had, we had redlined the, the second phase of the duties and powers, that the Audit Committee will be able to retain the services of professionals as necessary. Is that not the, that's, that seems to be the final. I don't understand why we would need that as a part of this ordinance. The second portion of the Audit Committee will be able to retain the services of professionals as necessary, municipal finance and audits and experts hired who have no past employment in the city or staff or current relationship therewithin or employment with the auditing firm or current relationships therewithin and shall be independent. I thought we had had the discussion that we were moving that part because we were having the, the citizens as a part of the conversation, as the, as a part of the deliberative body that would have the expertise.
I think you're right, Mayor. Excuse me. But I think you're right, and, but I, I would have to look at the record for that.
Counselor Bagley?
I, I would agree with Counsel Lombardi and yourself, that, that is my recollection as well, but this did go under, undergo a number of changes. For purposes of passing this tonight, I don't think that that sentence is objectionable from my perspective.
Yeah, well, Suzanne, did you have something to add to this conversation? Yep.
I might just suggest that there is a good reason to keep that in. In the, in the event there were some material issue that needed to be brought before the Audit Committee, you would probably want to retain someone who actually has experience in municipal finance and municipal audits, which is different from commercial. So were there to be some serious finding, you would probably want to retain someone with expertise right on point. So it gives you the right, but you're certainly welcome to rely, as much as you need to and want to, on the citizen members. But obviously, your choice.
It's not limited to that. And so I guess my, the, if there were significant issues found, and those issues were brought to the council as next steps, then the council could make that decision on whether or not to appropriate funds. The previous conversation was, going back to council, I had strong reservations about empowering the Audit Committee with any power of the purse to retain any, any, any outside members in order to create, to create, I guess, well, work, but also to have a separate, a separate committee with the ability to retain funds. Had a lot of hangups, for me, at least. And so I was, I thought that this was supposed to be removed. And I guess the question would be, could we amend to remove it at third reading? Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Since you've raised this issue, I want to raise one more. The term definitions for the non-city counselors, as pointed out during public comment, have been removed. So it's not clear in the language either how long the existing appointed members are And I think that that was an oversight from the last council session when we were considering this at second reading. It was noted in the memo to the council, but it was not in the language. I think we just missed that.
Well, I think just in purposes of getting this right, I'd move to table, third reading until next, next council meeting to have the revised changes that were discussed at the previous meeting. Counselor Tabor?
Yes, and I just did want to speak.
I had just, I proposed that, since I can't make amendment or motions, but I would propose that, but feel free to.
Do we have to take away the first motion, though?
Oh.
Motion to table takes precedence.
Yeah, motion.
Thank you, Kelly. Motion to table takes precedence, as Kelly says, so we can go down that path. I just was going to add, in terms of hiring outside help, an additional charge to the Audit Committee as if there are defects found in the audit, that the Audit Committee is the place to have a candid conversation with the auditor, and that's where an outside expert might be of benefit, if we need a, a neutral, highly skilled opinion.
And I would, I would agree with that, but I believe at that point, it, and without language clarifying that that's the only time a Audit Committee could require outside or raise the services of professionals as necessary, not, if it, as it's not tied to any specific findings or faults, I would await the council to be able to. As written, I could not support that and would want to have the council involved in the next steps, as stated, without the additional language.
I would make a motion to table third reading. I guess I don't know to what date, because it would be, if you want changes, don't we have to bring it back forward again?
The more appropriate motion might be to postpone to a date certain.
Okay.
To postpone till November? City Council meeting?
At the earliest, the earliest, the next available meeting?
Okay. I'd make that motion.
That would be October.
I think it would be October 24.
Motion to postpone till the October 24, 2022 meeting then.
Second. Kelly, does motion to postpone also pre, or supersede?
Well, you have that on, so.
All right, we'll go with that.
You're postponing.
Now, now do we need motions to amend?
You can't make amendments at third reading.
So how do we make these changes now?
So, again, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
My understanding is that you could move to suspend the rules with a two-thirds vote and then make a motion to amend.
Okay. I'll wait a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And now a motion to amend. Counselor, could somebody do both of the, the?
Yeah, Counselor Cook.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend Section A to reinsert the original language of the ordinance around terms for the appointed members that are non-city counselors, and amend Section B to eliminate the last sentence in Section B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Is there a motion to, or Counselor Denton, would you like to, oh, just noting the course. Counsel Lombardi?
There was a question about the rotation of terms not being mentioned in this. Did I hear that right?
Yes, and that's what Counselor Cook's first part of the amendment corrected for third reading.
Okay, the, I mean, I, I would think that that is going to be covered under another ordinance pertaining to all committees and the adjustment of terms.
Certainly, but while we have it on the floor, we should correct it to remove any doubt that we, that we could have here. Okay. With that, is there a motion to postpone until the August, October 24 meeting?
I already made that motion.
You did.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. That's, that is that. Thank you, Kelly, for hopefully getting that all to make sense in the minutes. Next up is the city manager's items which require action.
Thank you, Your Honor. In conjunction with the city clerk, we are looking for the city council to approve of polling hours for the state general election coming up this October 8, 2022, that the polling hours established be from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Your Honor, I motion to establish polling hours for the November 8 general election from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Second. Any conversation, questions? Well, thank you, Kelly, for all the hard work you do on Election Day. I know it's, it takes you about a week to recover from all of that work, so it's definitely appreciated. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item 2 of 2 is a right-of-way easement deed for, deeds for properties located along Chevrolet Avenue. At its May 19, 2022 Planning Board meeting, the board granted site plan approval and subdivision approval for land addressed at 668 Middle Street, and as part of that approval, the property owner agreed to convey a right-of-way and utility easement to the city for the portion of Chevrolet Ave., which is on 668 Middle Street in the rear. The applicant also secured an agreement from its abutter to make a similar conveyance to the city, and both conveyances were made a condition of the Planning Board approval. And tonight before you, we're looking for the city to accept those easement deeds over Chevrolet Ave. from the two different owners in forms substantially similar to those included in the packet this evening.
Are there any, Counsel Moro, sample motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion that recommend the city council authorize the city manager to accept and record right-of-way and utility easement deeds in substantially similar form to the easement deeds from Public Land, Public Land Holdings LLC, Catherine R. Wayland, contained in the agenda packet.
Second. Are there any questions? I see we have Attorney McCourt dressed in a fine suit here this evening, ready to answer. Counsel Moro, we got to give him one.
I don't actually have a question. I just want to make a comment that it has been a long time coming for the city to actually have rights to, to this road. It's always been a private way, and it's been a private way that we've really, you know, maintained as a city, but never really had all the full rights. So it's nice that I think we're finally have piecemealed together rights to be able to have all the utilities under the street, even when it's not owned by the city. So I'm excited we finally got to the end.
Counsel Moro, Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I just actually have a question about, I know that this is subdividing current property, and this is part of that condition. Just for, for information for the public, what exactly is happening here that we're asking for this change that wasn't happening before?
Yes, thank you. So this is, in essence, housekeeping. As Counsel Moro has, has alluded to, the city has maintained Chevrolet Ave. as a public way for many years, and there are likely prescriptive rights already to this road. But by approving these, these right-of-way deeds, we, we kind of clean up title and make it very clear what the city's rights and responsibilities are as it pertains to this portion of Chevrolet Ave.
Counsel Lombardi?
The other piece of this is that the, the back of the property on Middle Street, and I forget the exact number, was conveyed to a new owner and who is subdividing that backyard. And it is along Chevrolet Avenue, and then the owner of, of the next abutting property had, they worked together to, and worked pretty closely with the neighborhood to develop this project. So I think part of it is that they're bringing utilities to this project anyway, and so it was a convenient time to do this.
Thanks for, the city for taking advantage of the, the timing on that. I know it's, are there any other questions for Trevor? Thank you, Trevor. The Attorney McCourt. It's, it's always surprising when we find out a road in the city is not a road that the city maintains. And there is sometimes, you know, because nobody assumes it's not our responsibility to maintain that and to have the ability to fix it. So it's good, and thank you for the work that went into securing this, to be able to make sure that this meets the standards of, of, you know, certainly other city streets as people would expect that to do. So all in favor of this?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was it? City Manager, you just said two things? Wow. All right. Let's see, I look for a, a motion to adopt the consent agenda. So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Look forward to the, all the, the five Ks that are coming here, and not running in any of them, but wishing everyone well as they, as they, as they do. Let's see. Will, just, the scarecrows are coming back. So it feels like, it feels like this is scaretico time in the air, for sure, waking up, walking my kid to school. It is, it's definitely feeling like fall. Okay. Next up is email correspondence. I'd await a motion to accept and place on file.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is a letter from James Albion, Generations United Included, DBA Generations Arcade LLC, requesting an open discussion regarding possibly opening one of their console arcades at the skate park. Do we, is this something that the skateboard committee would, would want to entertain?
Your Honor, we can
Your Honor, we can certainly entertain it. I, you know, I don't know if this would fit into the plan of the skate park.
All right, well, we can await a motion to place on file and revisit.
Move we place on file, Your Honor.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and last is our letters from Bob Newby regarding dog ordinance. The, he, Bob also reached out to me stating that there were, you know, other avenues that he would like to pursue. I think that while originally thinking that the Governance Committee would be able to look at this, there's a lot on the plate, and I think more fact-finding needs to happen on some of the requests from Mr. Newby. So I would entertain a motion to have a report back on the existing dog ordinance as it certainly stands in the city to date.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Any discussion? That? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, hold on, I saw Counselor Cook just about to.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Actually, on the report back, I would love to also see information on what is the best policy, kind of considered best policies with regard to dogs and dog walking within cities beyond just what our policies are. If we can.
The, so looking at the policy and comparing it to other policies, this is a, you know, a subject that's near and dear to a lot of folks, and sometimes when we make policies for a whole city, they're, they're not ideal for each individual use case, but they can't be in that, but would love to hear back from city staff on this, and then we'll take it from there. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right. So this is something that I, I learned that Elaine Syracuse Long, standing member of the Rec Board nearly 30 years as battling cancer, like to read, if she's watching at home, a letter that, if it got lost in the mail, I sent her earlier this week. Elaine, I write to send you strength on behalf of the city of Portsmouth as you battle cancer. I do so as mayor of the city that has benefited so much through your dedication to the Recreation Board for nearly 30 years. I also write as a son of Portsmouth that benefited from your dedication. You joined the Rec Board in 1985 as I was learning to walk, and the decisions made you made had a profoundly positive impact on my life. Finally, I write to you as a father, it is my hope that my daughters have the same sense of community and volunteerism that you exemplified and taught your children, that they carry on your commitment to the community as proof that you've set the right example. With gratitude for your many years of service, Deglem McCacken. Those of you who serve with Mark Syracuse is on the PTS, we wish your mother Elaine and Elaine yourself our very best wishes. Next is the appointments to be considered, ones that will not require a vote, and there's one more in here that I gotta remember to, to read. So the, and these are, again, appointments to be considered, so consider them, and if we have conversations, you know, if we can further have those, these aren't, this isn't a formality. You know, I can't talk to every person about these, but if there are, if folks have feelings, always feel free. This is, this is the responsibility of the mayor, but you know, it's not, you know, it's not something I wouldn't want to hear from each one of you on after they are being considered. So appointment of John Mayer to the Arts and Nonprofit Committee Cultural Plan Subcommittee, reappointment of Everett Eaton to the Economic Development Commission, reappointment of Tom Watson to the Economic Development Commission, appointment of Richard Candy to the Task Force to Study Private-Public Historical Archives, appointment of Susan Sterry to the Task Force to Study Public-Pprivate Historical Archives, the appointment of Thomas Hardeman Jr. to study public-private historical archives, the appointment of Katinka de Rutier to the Board of Library Trustees, and the reappointment of Janaki Fonseca to the Board of Library Trustees. So again, no votes, no nothing right now, but appreciate everyone who has been willing to serve and are with us. We do need, for all appointments, we need, we need people. We're still looking to fill the, I know people have expressed interest, but you need to fill out an application for any of these. You can't just say, hey, Dee, I want to do it. You gotta, gotta show me that you're gonna fill out an application and get it in, and then we'll, we'll get you up to be nominated. Next is a request to change the date of December 19th, city council meeting. I would await a sample motion to change the city council meeting date of December 19th to Wednesday, December 14th, 2022.
So moved.
Second?
And this is really to recognize the Hanukkah holiday and our council policy to look to where possible not have meetings fall on religious observances. And that's it for me. Oh, no, we need a vote on that. Sorry, it's not an administrative thing, but we gotta actually vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thanks. Counselor Taber, you are up next with citizen input to ARPA funding, 2022 rec study and community campus.
Thank you, Mayor. I would propose a motion to authorize the city manager to implement a citywide survey process to determine residents' values and priorities for use of ARPA funds, updated city recreation initiatives, and future use of the community campus and adjoining property.
Second?
Okay, thank you. I'll speak to it briefly. As you know, I've asked the staff for a report back earlier in the year on public engagements methods because we as a council had a very clear goal to be a council that, in our words of our goals, continuously enhances the city council practices to, to deliver a trusted, transparent, and responsive process. And I emphasize responsive. I think we as a council, certainly I, feel the more public input we have upfront and the good data on what our public residents feel, the more public confidence we have later when the decisions are made. And after we looked at an initial survey of engagement methods, one method came out, and that's quick, very light, easy-to-use surveys, which technology now enables us to do. So I initially was gonna propose we do that, a survey like that around the community campus, mentioned that, I think, at the August 1st meeting, and began talking with staff. And as we looked at the opportunity to partner with some firms that do with, do this, there was a feeling that we could also use this technology for the recreation study, which is in the field now, and has a couple of hundred survey respondents, but maybe we could boost that, and maybe we could get input on ARPA money. So as, as things tend to happen, it grew.
Submission grew there.
But, you know, the community campus makes sense to me because it's taxpayer-owned property, it's taxpayer money that we're gonna use to develop into the years and the future. So why shouldn't we ask the taxpayers what they'd like to see there? And if you think about these various decisions that we have to make, if we can get a broad survey, 300, 400 participants, broad enough that we can then see in the data, let's take the example of community campus, how do young people feel about recreation out there? How do young people feel about affordable housing? How do parents of schoolchildren feel about that as a location for additional education opportunities? So I think the, the partner we're looking at, Flash Vote, would enable us to get a broad sample. They could scientifically weight it to match the demographics of the city, they could help us design the questions so that they're scientifically effective, and we would get a lot of good data to make our decisions. I've tried to make this broad and flexible so the city manager and her staff can apply it as they see fit, in the orders that they see fit. It may make sense to expand the rec study as a proof of concept to see how it works, and then develop a more detailed survey for the community campus or for ARPA money. But I leave that in her capable hands. So I think it can help us engage the public. Those who take the survey will want to participate more. We can get not just opinions, but actual partnerships with our residents who will become interested and involved. And I hope that it's a way that we can find some innovative platforms to reach out to the public and engage them. And that's the purpose.
Counselor Taber? Any discussion? Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Counselor Taber, for this. I think it's a great initiative. My concern, and this would go to the execution, is the three areas highlighted, ARPA funds, recreation initiative, and community campus, could almost be lumped together, and I don't think that's the intent. I think the intent is for three discrete surveys, so I would just hope that however we do it, you know, somebody doesn't read it quickly and think it's all three things for one objective.
Absolutely, and you're good, wise to clarify that. And actually, the firm we're looking at, Flash Vote, gives us a price of $9,900 for six surveys. So we could do those three, and we'd have three more for free.
Counselor Boeck?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Counselor Taber, for bringing this forward. I know the, on the Rec Board, you know, we've been working on this study, and we've looked for more opportunities to engage the community. It seems like we would get, special interest groups would show up in, you know, small numbers and be very vocal, and we felt like we weren't getting a true sense of the community, what the community wants as a whole. So any opportunity to engage the community more, and any chance for us to listen to them, I think is very appropriate, and I mean, that's our job, is to listen to the community and represent them. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thanks, Counselor Boeck. Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that this is a really important proposal coming from Counselor Taber. And the reason I think it's so important is that when we sit here as city councilors and we hear public comment, we usually only hear comment from people who are unhappy about changes or don't want us to move forward with certain issues. We rarely hear proposals and people coming forward asking us to consider, how do we want to develop a property like community campus? And that's unfortunate because it's very hard as a city councillor than to understand what the viewpoints are across the city, especially when a new initiative comes forward within your term. So you're not going door-to-door talking to residents, you're not hearing necessarily from everyone except the few people that you run into in the community. This gives us actual data, and it's important to have real data points when you're making decisions as a city councillor, because you want to reflect the views of your city as a whole, rather than a small group of interested parties on any particular issue. So I really am excited about this. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Counselor Cook? Counselor Embardi?
Yeah, I would just second what was said on, on all of this, and also say that I think many times people are somewhat intimidated to come and stand at this podium, and this, this would erase that intimidation. And I think we, it's very possible we'd get a lot of good data.
Thanks, Counselor Embardi. Any other thoughts? You know, it is, it's tough to get up and speak publicly, and it's good to remember that it's not easy to do, certainly if you don't have the habit of doing it. And, you know, I look at this survey as a, everybody, I guess, is, when you, when you talk about city business as, you know, I'm now coaching a kindergarten and first grade soccer team and talking to the parents, sometimes they're somewhat surprised at how many opportunities we try to provide to give feedback. You know, for example, the, the capital improvement plan, you know, that would, deadline was last week, so we can't ask for more input, but they're always surprised. And I think that any time that we can look to get more involvement, it shows that, that more people are gonna have skin in the game. They're gonna recognize that there's more, hey, I have an opinion, you know, maybe I should work on having more people have my opinion, maybe I should get more involved. And so, you know, if you believe in government, and I believe in government, and I think everybody does, at least on the local level, we believe in government, then, you know, it's our job to improve it and make it more responsive. And, you know, we have the technology to do so. Look forward to seeing, you know, if it's this firm or another firm that's able to, and there's no limit in what firm we would use here, to be able to deliver more data so that we could understand that and engage more people. So very much appreciate the, the thought that this was brought, and would trust Portsmouth would, you know, if we ask, they're gonna, they're gonna let us know. So look forward to that. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Counselor Denton?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that the legal department explore potential legal remedies to recover costs incurred by the city of Portsmouth residents and businesses due to climate change impacts.
Second?
Any discussion? Well, thank you for bringing that forward. Any other comments? Look forward to leaving it in the hands of the legal department. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we don't have, we've already had the presentation, so Counselor Cook, a couple of things under your name.
Thank you again. Tonight, I'm bringing forward first a package of policies and ordinances that have gone through the Governance Committee. So while they're under my name, they're really, these were things that we moved forward from Governance to the council tonight. You will see public art policy changes, you'll see changes to an existing, the existing public art funding ordinance, and then you'll also see a draft public art review committee ordinance. And these arts policies and ordinances work as a package. Essentially, these changes were made because the existing public art policy refers public art to ArtSpeak, which is no longer in existence. Our current funding for park, public art ordinance has a few gaps in it that have been identified in the course of working through that ordinance over the last many years. And the public art policies also envisioned that ArtSpeak would set up a public art review committee as part of the current public art policies that, of course, doesn't exist because ArtSpeak doesn't exist. So this changes that function and moves it to the city council. So the city council is setting up a public art review committee, since we don't have ArtSpeak to do that, based upon the guidelines that were written by ArtSpeak for the city and were adopted, the public art review guidelines. So we're just following exactly the guidelines we have and amending our current policies to fit with our current practice, so that we actually have a committee that can review public art, rather than every time a piece of public art comes to the council, we have to ask the city manager to set up an ad hoc committee. Or when somebody wants to make a donation for a public art project, we don't have a way to handle that currently, because we don't have a standing public art review committee to think about that donation and how do we put in place a piece of public art. That would require, again, the city manager setting up an ad hoc review committee for just one donation and one piece of public art. So if we had this kind of process in place, you would have seen the Portsmouth 400 Committee coming here tonight with a proposal that was gonna go to the public art review committee, and they wouldn't have had to do all the extra legwork to set up a committee to review those proposals. We would have had the process in place already, and we do not currently. We had another proposal that came before the council a few months ago, and again, we referred that to the city manager, and the city manager has had to then go through the process of, again, setting up a committee. So this really cleans up the arts policies and helps to clarify what is clearly not, not really clear at the moment, frankly. Right now, if you were reading the policies, you would think that we were still referring things to ArtSpeak. So hopefully, everyone here tonight will be happy with moving these forward, and I would move And I would move to bring them forward for first reading, the changes to the ordinances, specifically for first reading at the October 24, 2022 City Council meeting, and the change to the policy.
Second?
Any discussion? Counselor Denton?
I'm very excited to see these come forward. I don't recall if it was 2016 or so when we worked on the percentage of the arts, but Nick Cracknell spoke of the art outside the Found You Place garage, and that is a result of this policy, both that hammer that might be dancing along with the art paneling along the glass stairwell.
Counselor Blaylock?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Counselor Cook. Certainly a big supporter of public art, and I'm glad that we have a proper process now to look at any proposals. Certainly, when every project, city project over $1 million requires a certain percentage of it to spend on art, so I want to make sure we do this correctly, and thank you for setting this up.
Any other questions or, well, thank you for bringing this forward. I think the, you know, it's, it's tough to imagine, you know, even Prescott Park without the whale, Orchard Island without the woman looking out to the sea. There's just a, you know, it's, that's Portsmouth, and, and long after we're gone, we'll remember the art that, that our community produced. I like this for the reasons that have already been stated, but one of the reasons, I think, that Counselor Denton stated in that, you know, if we could have a, we had the hammer outside, but if we had had that, you know, that, that glass sculpture also, you know, was, or the glass etching was also part of the art. So that could have qualified in and of itself. I think this is, you know, this is amazing that we could have a policy that, when we're looking at buildings, we can incorporate from the ground up in terms of the design of those buildings. I remember the, and then to move it so that we don't, you know, walk those pieces of art just, you know, on the building themselves. We had discussed the last Council, potentially when we were doing modifications to the Pierce Island Treatment Plant, and we're still looking on a final bill for that, so I'm sure we're, once we get that, we'll have the percent for the art. But that doesn't have to be limited there. It could be a part of the, the bridge over to Pierce Island. And so there's a lot that can happen, and I think all of it would, you know, further beautify Portsmouth. And looking at the makeup of the people there, I think we have a broad swath of both, you know, experts, but then also people that, that, that love art and being a part of the community, that opportunity there. So thank you, Counselor Cook, for supporting this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. You got one more?
I do. The second item under my name tonight is also a, a policy coming forward from the Governance Committee. So it's not really my, my policy coming forward is coming from the Governance Committee. And this policy is the, a new policy. It would be an auditor-rotation policy. And the reason that I'm bringing this forward tonight is that, you know, we've, we've sat here, we've listened to a lot of public comment about the Audit Committee over the last few months. And I think it was abundantly clear that there were a lot of concerns from public comment about how often the, the person doing the audit changes, whether or not that rotates on a regular basis. I think there were also questions about how often we have an RFP process to select a new auditor. So the goal of this policy is to clarify for the public and, and note that it is the Council policy that the principal auditor, the engagement team, and the back office person who reviews the audit all change every five years. And that's current practice. That is the practice that we, our current auditing firm actually uses. We don't have the same auditor constantly. We have a change in auditors every five year, that principal auditor. And, and that has been our policy, but I think it's really important, now that we have an Audit Committee, that the public understands and that the Audit Committee is aware that that is our continuing policy. I also think it's important that the public understands that we go out with an RFP process every five years to select an auditing firm. Now, there has been some concern expressed that there's not a requirement to change your auditing firm. There is a problem with having a requirement in the policy that we change our auditing firm every five years. And the problem is that we only have two auditing firms currently bidding in New Hampshire on public audits. So that would essentially, if you had a requirement that you change auditing firm every five years, and you only have two companies currently bidding, that would eliminate the role of a decision in an RFP process. It would eliminate the function of the Audit Committee. It would eliminate the function of the Council in choosing an auditor. You would be stuck with the company, the other company bidding every single time, and that also reduces competition. So we can't make that requirement in our policy, because we would be stuck with who's left every five years. Alternatively, though, we can clarify that our principal auditor does change every five years, and that is best practices, and also that is part of federal requirements for auditing firms. So I think it, it should be really clear to everyone that that's what this policy clarifies for our community, for the auditing committee, it provides that direction.
Thank you, Counselor Cook. Counselor Taber?
Yes, I, I think, I'm, I don't know that there's ever been as much discussion about the city's audit as there's been in the last two years, which is healthy. And that discussion's been lively and heated at times, and that's all good. I do think we need to clarify a couple of things. It was stated earlier that this ordinance, or this policy, let's, let's be clear, it's a policy, avoids changing audit firms and says, we'll simply change the internal faces within the auditing company we have. No, that's not correct. It, it has two pieces. The first piece is we have an RFP process every five years. By definition, that's a competitive process. The process is underway right now, and it is competitive. And my hope is that the newly constituted Audit Committee will go through the process. Remember, we didn't just decide to go with the same auditor, as has been stated. We decided to extend that auditor, Malanson's term of service with us just one year. And audits are always awarded on a three-year basis minimum. That's the best practice. So we gave ourselves a, a one-year little window. If we put this policy in place, we'll go forward, first with a competitive bidding process this year, which the Audit Committee will weigh and rank the two firms and make a recommendation. There'll be a three-year contract. And then, over time, we will put the city's audit out to bid. That's what this policy would do. But it's, it's a belt-and-suspenders policy. If we only get one bidder, we're going to require that that firm rotate their principals, the team, the lead auditor, and the partner involved. All three have to rotate. And Counselor Cook did her homework on best auditing practices, public and private, and came up with that recommendation. So I would support it.
So any other comment? We don't have a motion yet on the floor. You know, one thing that would pop into mind is that we might want the Audit Committee to look at this, since, you know, they're in the process of producing an RFP, and to weigh in on this, this is, you know, obviously, I think we've, you know, been as clear as we, we can that we're doing a lot of work to, to bring the, the best firm to Portsmouth in terms of doing the audit. That's, without a doubt, it's approaching a, like a 5% of my total time on two councils talking about an Audit Committee for one that, you know, was the, yeah, for, you know, sometimes it seems the, what gets lost is that we have an independent firm. They've just been doing it for a long time, as they've been doing it with other cities for a really long time, but we're going to fix that, if, if there's a, a better firm that's presented. So I guess I would be, I would be worried about, you know, I understand the desire of the Governance Committee and Counselor Cook for stating that we're going to have a policy that states under no certain, you know, without equivocation that we will have a time of which we would have to change out an audit firm, but I would worry about the timing of this right now, and, you know, I guess would want to see what the Audit Committee would say about this firm, or this, this policy, since this would be affecting their, their ability to, to select a firm. But we don't have a motion.
So you're looking for a motion to recommend that this policy be reviewed by the Audit Committee?
Send it to the Audit Committee.
And report back to City Council. So moved.
Second?
Is there a discussion? Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I think this motion, as it stands tonight, really belongs to the City Council. We have 25 years of using the same auditor, and not a word was mentioned by anyone, as far as I know. Nobody on any of the previous councils, nobody in the newspaper. Suddenly, in year 26, it's a huge, huge problem. Over those 25 years, if you take a little journey back in time, Portsmouth was in a depressed economic state. Our bond rating was close to junk status. For the last 11 years, we've had a AAA bond rating, which is the highest rating. Banks don't hand that out like candy. We have a AAA bond rating. We have a highly desirable city that property prices would tell you that just about everybody wants to live in. We have excellent city government and stewardship of the city. I think that speaks to the integrity of our city government more than, you know, quotes about an audit or an Audit Committee can do. I, I think Malanson has done a tremendous job. As was pointed out, municipal audits in the state of New Hampshire, for governments such as ours, there aren't a lot of them. It's not a lucrative industry to be in, because it's highly specialized, and you're limited to a very small number of potential customers. So it's not like we're a private corporation and we have, you know, four huge firms that we can choose from and rotate from every year. You know, we, it's highly conceivable that we will put this out to bid over the next 25 years, and many times only get one response, or, or only get two responses. So I, I think the policy as written accounts for that potential eventuality, yet it also is written in such a way that we don't have this 25-year gap without anybody realizing what's happening. But I do want to reiterate, I think the reason we had an audit, the same audit company, not the same auditor, but the same audit company for 25 years, isn't because something was going wrong. It was because things were going so well in this city that it never even occurred to anybody to ask. We've gone from a place where our government couldn't afford to keep the schools open, to plow the roads, to fill the potholes, to being, you know, one of the premier cities in the country. And, and that doesn't happen by accident. That happens by citizen engagement and good management and staff.
Counselor Bagley? Any other comments? Counselor Taber?
I agree that, with Counselor Bagley, that this is a Council decision. We could get input if we'd like from the Audit Committee, but I would support it as a Council policy, even if the current Audit Committee decides to criticize it.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to be clear about this auditor-rotation policy, that this is a change in the sense that none of these things are specified currently anywhere in our policies. And one of the things that the auditing committee, Audit Committee had wanted was a guarantee that we were going to go out for RFP on a regular basis. And this also clarifies that, that principal auditor changes, which is also something that the Audit Committee had wanted clarification on. In fact, there were lots of questions around how often, in sitting on the Audit Committee, how often does the principal auditor change? How often do you change the engagement team? How often does the, the back office change? And so if we're really clear with the Audit Committee that this is the policy, and frankly, this is the policy our current firm is practicing, that in future, we don't even need to ask those questions, because that's the policy. That's the policy that goes out as part of the RFP. There's no question, when people are bidding on the contract, that they understand the policy. And that's why I asked to address it here tonight, and the Governance Committee put it forward to address it here tonight. I don't know that there's much value added in going to the Audit Committee, because they would want to clarify these things, they want to specify these things. They would not want to eliminate their role, essentially, in reviewing by saying you have to change audit firms every five years, and they, they wouldn't want to go any further, because it would eliminate their role.
Well, I guess, since I kind of asked, and Counsel Moro was kind enough to provide a sample motion, I mean, I, I think that it's important to, I can't assume that I know what the Audit Committee thinks on this. I look forward to the, the feedback from the Audit Committee on a policy that would affect the selecting of the audit. It's our decision to make, but I don't think, having input on that, nor do I think that, you know, it's, I think it's clear that we, we want to understand, or we want to clarify that the turnover and change is good, whether or not that's firm or the individuals, but I don't see the, the harm in, in asking for the input and feedback of those that are serving on the Audit Committee, but certainly do not feel bound to take that feedback or concern, as, you know, you know, I, my daughter takes very little of my feedback or concern. But the, I think, you know, from my position, it's important, we have a, we have a committee that is designed to make recommendation to the City Council on audits and RFPs and auditing firms, and would like to hear what they have to say on this. But Counsel Lombardi?
Yeah, I, Mayor, I would agree with you, that I think it's probably a good thing to bring this to the Audit Committee and let them weigh in on it, and in a more formal way, rather than in public comment, so maybe give us a written response.
All right. With that, I'm sensing a roll call vote. Kelly, would you mind taking the, the roll on whether or not to refer or report back from the Audit Committee?
Certainly. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counsel Moro?
Yes.
Counsel Bagley?
No.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock?
Yes.
Counsel Cook?
No.
Mayor McCacklin?
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 2.
All right. Thank you for bringing that policy. Next up, Counsel Blaylock.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm excited to give an update on the skateboard park. The committee's been working very hard. I just want to mention, we are still accepting donations for the lights. We've got a little ways to go there, so, yeah, don't hesitate. So far, our intent is to have the skateboard park out for bid by winter, early spring. That all depends on permitting and working with Department of Environmental, the DES. We, the original design did come back a little higher price tag than the, the money we allocated for the skate park. As you know, this was all started with a, the 2 million, 2.2 million skate park. The design with the pump track and the skate park included would now bring us to a price tag of 3.7 million if we did the design that was last presented in front of the City Council. We have decided that the pump track can be moved to a phased-out portion, so we can keep it under the, the price tag. We believe that we can still build a, honestly, a world-class skate park. I think it's going to be a huge destination. It's going to be a bigger skate park than surrounding communities. I truly think this, the skate community is going to be a gem. I truly think the skate community is going to be a gem. We are keeping the same price tag, and we're hopeful to break ground for summer construction and be done by around this time next year. So, I'll keep those donations coming in for the lights. And I just want to say, also, I'll be wearing my skate park pin until this is completed, so you have a word that I am putting all effort forward.
It's definitely noted. Any comments on the skate park? Just hell of a job, and appreciate the willingness to work within budgets. That's difficult, and having no loss of enthusiasm around that, delivering, I think it was reported in the Herald, you know, the project. A lot of folks are really excited, including myself, and my, don't talk about her much, but Aurelia, it's always about my six-year-old, but my daughter, Aurelia's going to be the skater, probably, so look forward to getting her out there. Thanks, Counselor Blaylock. All right. Next up, approval of grants and donations. We have an approval of donation for Memorial Bench, Memorial Park Bench in the South Milpon Dog Park in honor of Joshua Fogel, in the amount of $2,350. I'd wait a motion to approve and accept the donation from Maggie Fogel for a bench in memory of Joshua Fogel as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is a donation to the Portsmouth Police Explorers Program from the Barrington Fireman Association, in the amount of $240. I'd wait a motion to approve and accept the donation as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the Violence Against Women Act, VA grant from the New Hampshire Department of Justice to the victim-witness-advocate position includes a cash match contribution of $25,025. Sample motion, move to approve and accept the grant for the police department as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then finally, the approval of the Office of Highway Safety Grant for the New Hampshire Department of Safety, which includes 13 different highway safety initiatives, includes a 20% match for $53,510.66. Sample motion, move to approve and accept the grant for the police department as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I believe the Office and Highway Safety Grant, not the police department.
The Office of the Highway Safety Grant, okay. How I thought I read it, but approval of the Office of the Highway Safety Grant from the New Hampshire Department of Safety, which includes 13 different highway safety initiatives, includes a 20% match. Oh, you're looking for a move, yes, I read that right off there. Move to approve and accept the grant for the, hmm.
You just added police department.
No, no, because it's in there, in the sample motion, so I'm reading that. Move to approve and accept the grant for the, hmm, okay. Who's accepting this? Move to, well, why don't we just leave it as move to approve and accept the grant as presented?
Yes. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Honestly, I had no idea what you were talking about until I got back to that point, Counselor Bagley.
Oh, I don't have the sample motion on my.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, guys, you know, for reading at home, I got some sample motions here, so I don't come up with all that on my own, so. City manager, we have some informational items.
We do. First up, Your Honor, is the standing verbal update on the status of the back entire redevelopment effort. And as has been reported, the group continues to meet as an entire group every Tuesday, and there are subgroups within the larger group moving to advance all parts of the effort, and we are still following along the timeframe that was presented to council. We are supposed to have a check-in with the GSA and the National Park Service. It was originally set for October 14th, and at the request of the GSA, it is being moved out a week to the 21st. That is to accommodate their scheduling. And the only other update that would be worth noting is that this time, our legal department has reviewed, has received and is starting to review a draft development agreement that will be a large part of what we bring to the council, is part of the proposal that would be submitted to the National Park Service. So that is the latest update, if you will, since the last time we brought an update to the council, and as always, we'll bring updates regularly. The second informational item relates to a report back on the demolition ordinance from the Demolition Review Committee, which consisted of the committee itself, the Historic District Committee, and the Planning Board working together. And in your packet is a very comprehensive memo from Planning Director Zent and Principal Planner Cracknell, who've been working alongside Assistant City Attorney Trevor McCourt, who's here, and our Chief Building Inspector, Shanti Wolf. So the memo outlines a summary of recommendations that could be followed, so we would look for the direction of the council from here. The council could certainly direct staff to prepare draft amendments. We work very well inter-departamentally. It would be a group effort among planning, legal, and inspections. We could bring those draft recommendations back to this group. We could bring them to governance. I know governance has a lot on its plate, so we would endeavor to take up that work and move it forward as use of it. And Assistant City Attorney McCourt is here with any questions on behalf of the staff.
Any discussion or questions on the draft ordinance, or this is not ordinance, draft demolition ordinance? Yeah, it is an ordinance. Counselor Lombardi?
Yeah, I first say that this is an important piece, the potential of losing the character in our various neighborhoods with the demolition of older homes. We have historic houses outside of the historic district, and so the, there is nothing that we can do that can stop the demolition outside of the historic district, but we can delay it and maybe convince people that it's not the best thing to do. The only way that we can do that is through an appeal to the state and for legislation that allows a city to protect the character and nature of the building stock in the neighborhood. I don't see that coming, so I think this is at least a step in the right direction, but it will always be inadequate. It'll just delay and maybe save some good buildings.
Counselor Moreau?
I'm wondering if I can ask Assistant Attorney McCourt, I know, because I was part of this original discussion some time ago, when we had put a possibility to allow the Demolition Review Committee to request advisory opinions from Historic District Commission regarding historical, cultural, and architectural significance of a structure, I can't remember if you guys have actually, I don't know if you got any feedback, I didn't see it in here, as far as feedback from the HDCs to their opinion on doing that, because I know they have a very full plate and that it might be too much for them, so I was just curious as to how if that discussion had happened.
They incorporated all of the recommendations that came from the Demolition Review Committee. I don't believe they spoke specifically to that point.
They did not, no. Okay, and, hmm, sorry, can I keep going? I, less of a question, but more a comment, I mean, I agree with a lot of these aspects that were originally from the review committee. I don't agree to increasing the demolition period to 180 days, but I do love the idea that we actually talked about at Planning Board, which was to start the 90-day time period at the day of the public hearing versus at the day of notice, because it does take a while for us to be able to actually get a meeting actually scheduled, so it makes it longer without actually making it longer by an amount, just really to be able to get a meeting scheduled. So I personally like to see us actually get a draft ordinance back with the things that we can legally actually change in the ordinance that are here. That's just my two cents.
Coming as a lawyer, you know the things that we can legally do?
Yeah.
Seems like a good start.
I'm not sure all of it's legal, so.
Counselor Taber?
I agree with Counselor Moreau, because I took a look at demolition committees around the seacoast, and 180 days would be a real outlier. So my question would be, would that stand up legally? Would a property owner say at some point, this is a taking? And would we be on solid legal ground? Exeter's 90 days, Concord's 30 to 40 days, depending on the notifications, Raya's 49 days. So I'd be interested in what's legally the longest we could delay a project? Because Counselor Lombardi's right, there's no enabling legislation for this. And I'm also curious how this would be integrated into the building code. I mean, doesn't a committee have to exist by ordinance?
Thank you, Counselor. To answer your first question about how long would stand up in a court of law, I would say that the process that is contemplated here by this ordinance is a cooperative one, which provides an opportunity for the public to weigh in and provide some input back to the, you know, some developer or somebody who's trying to demolish a building. I don't know that there's going to be some magic number that says, okay, this is going to stand up in court, and this isn't. It's more about encouraging developer to work with the process and work with the community to try and see if we can preserve a home that is historic or identify that a home certainly is not historic. Would you mind repeating your second question? I'm sorry.
There was a recommendation that this be put into the building code.
Yes.
And how would a committee exist as part of the building code, as opposed to by ordinance?
Well, the city is able to amend the building code by ordinance, so it would still be an ordinance, even though it's part of the city's building code. And a potential source of authority that has been identified by, I identified, was that there's a demolition permit, which comes in through the building code, so this could fall under that authority.
Counselor Blaylock and Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think there was some concern from the Historic District Commission about if the date wasn't started from notice, because I know there'd be a delay in noticing the meeting, then scheduling the meeting, and then if you did all the math, I think at the end, you'd end up with like seven days or something to look at a property. So I think there was some concern, the HDC. Obviously, I don't want to do anything illegal, I want to follow the law, but I know that came up.
Counselor Cook?
I think it's really important to remember when we're looking at this, that part of the intent here was to preserve historic stock that's outside of the HDC's purview within the city, that's outside of the historic district. And I really, I'm happy with what's coming forward and the recommendations coming forward, and I would like to see more work done on this. But at the same time, when we're concerned about historic properties outside of the historic district being demolished, we have to consider the alternative. The alternative is expanding the historic district to protect those properties, and that's really the only thing you can do in New Hampshire law at the moment to protect those properties from demolition, is having review by the Historic District Commission. That is a double-edged sword. A lot of people who live in historic neighborhoods, who are outside of the historic district, don't want to be part of it. So they take on risk there, that a neighbor, that somebody will buy the house next door, tear it down, and build the maximum-size structure allowable within that zoning. And that happens. That happens in cities across the country, where old houses are torn down and people build the largest house they possibly can build that is allowable in that space. But we also have to think about housing in the long term, and what we need for housing stock in the city, and allowing development that increases housing. So there's a huge balance here. I don't know that a demolition commission, committee is ever going to solve the problem of saving historic homes and buildings outside of the historic district. But there are a lot of factors that we would have to weigh when talking about saving those historic homes, and no one wins in some cases.
Thank you, Counselor Lombardi, and then back to Counselor Bagley.
Yeah, there's another piece of this that isn't mentioned, but is also a problem, and that's the thought of demolition by neglect, and that is happening around the city in various places. I don't know how to address that, and I don't know legally a neglected property. Is there any recourse that the city has for that?
Not as currently constructed under our ordinances, no. We don't have a property maintenance code, for example.
Counselor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would have a difficult time supporting this if it was any more than the 90 days. One, I don't see in here the enabling legislation that would allow us to do it. I do understand the intent and the desire to save historic buildings, such as what was done with Cary Cottage through Counselor Moreau's work and others. However, I stand that up against the rights of the property owner. You know, I specifically chose to buy my house outside the HDC. My next-door neighbor and the people that live across the street from me are in it. As an American, in the live-free-or-die state, I think we need to be careful about telling people what they can and can't do with their property, and I feel like this crosses that line.
Thank you, Counselor Bagley. Any other thoughts? Is there a motion on the floor? I don't think so.
I think I alluded to what I would like to see as a motion.
That's my fault. We can't talk as much as we just talked without a motion. All right. Get a motion on the floor.
I would like to make a motion that we request that the city's staff review the recommendations that have been brought forward and to draft a new ordinance that is legally sufficient and what they recommend to us. You know, we talked about being in the building code, so it has a little bit more teeth as far as, you know, background support. I agree at the 90 days, I agree at the start of the 90 days, maybe could be what could be adjusted so that it gives us time, because sometimes it could take 30 days just to schedule the first hearing, so I'd say let's look at that, and, yeah, let's take all of the information here and try to meld it into a draft that we can approve.
Second?
It's a long motion, I know.
Any other discussion? I'd look for this report back. I think it's alluded, there's no enabling legislation other than increasing the HDC. You know, I don't even think the folks in the HDC want the HDC increased already overworked. You know, and, you know, there are private property rights, you know, and to be able to do with what you, you know, you purchase a property with the designs to do that. Thank you, Attorney McCourt. There's also, you know, people want to feel a process, and I think that if we have a process that, you know, hopefully incentivizes communication between the property owner and, you know, those that are, you know, looking to explain, you know, the significance of this property to that property owner that might not otherwise know that, might realize there is more to be gained by preserving a structure that is a part of the fabric of Portsmouth, and we need to find a time that's going to do this. I don't look at this as a way that we are going to somehow be able to withhold the right to do something and bleed the person out of money or desire to do that. You know, I don't think that would be legal, and it would likely just increase the cost of housing and the perception that Portsmouth is a tough place to work on, your home, something that I'm really happy with our inspector of making such great efforts to reduce that stigma and get people to know that they can work through the department. But this, hopefully, is collaborative in this process, you know, where we can hear about a building and the property owner can hear from their would-be neighbors. So seems like a reasonable path forward, and I'd support this. So, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. We've made it to miscellaneous.
Your Honor, I have one miscellaneous, if I can jump the line. As you will recall, the deadline for citizen input for CIP requests was this past Friday. We had a We had a record 102 requests submitted, 67 of which appear to be unique, discreet requests. As you can imagine, there's some overlap. So, what we're going to do is suggest some sort of responsive, accessible conversation that the council could have to find a meaningful way to include those into the CIP process. So, we'll come back to you with that, but I just want to give you those, those good statistics because they just came into us.
Well, we will find, we asked for it. I was really hoping we would get engagement. And then, you know, for the projects that aren't going to be, you know, prioritized for this year, I hope folks continue to ask for and learn to advocate for projects. All right, Council Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I actually have two miscellaneous items. The first one, I think, you know, there's been a lot of talk in the community about hate speech and tonight, there was a symposium in Kittery that involved the Portsmouth Police Department, the Kittery Police Department, Berwick Police Department, as well as several other seacoast police departments on, you know, how this can be addressed, what you can do, you know, just to deal with this issue in our community. And I want to be clear because it hasn't always been clear when people have come up here to speak. You know, as, as city councilors, for the most part, we try to stay nonpartisan. And when we're talking about hate speech, at least me personally, we're not talking about Trump or Obama or Biden or things like that. We're talking about these white supremacist groups primarily that have been posting stickers and distributing pamphlets throughout the city. I don't want to, you know, there's, there's partisan politics and then there's stuff that's really egregious. And I think the, these pamphlets and stickers that have been put up are really egregious and I think that's what was addressed tonight in Kittery at the Community Center. There will be another event online on Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00. And if you go to the Portsmouth, New Hampshire Police Department Facebook page, you can see the link to sign up for that. So, I wanted to just call attention to that. The second thing, and the rest of the Parking, Traffic, and Safety Committee probably won't be excited on announcing this, but at the meeting this Thursday at 8:30 a.m., we are going to discuss potential changes to the neighborhood parking program that's happening currently in the Islington Creek area. And I've received a number of emails already from the best thing ever, rather indifferent to the worst thing ever. So, your input is, is going to be helpful because the input has been all over the place. There is definitely not a consensus from what I can see. So, if you have strong opinions about the neighborhood parking program, please send us an email or come to speak at that meeting. You can come in person or speak via Zoom. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Council Bagley. Council Tabor? Ooh, we're getting all miscellaneous here tonight.
Just a request, I spoke with, as the community campus has come up in conversation, last meeting and this meeting, I spoke to somebody who was the architect with the architecture firm for that site and they said, the public really needs to know how much of that is wetlands, how much is not buildable, to see the buildable parcels. And so, if we could, request would be if the webpage for that could have an updated map of the whole 36 acres. Because I think that would be helpful for us as councilors and for the public.
Now, there was a request for a work session at our, our Neighborhood Ward Three meeting. So, potentially if we could modify that request for a, a working session at some point in the future to discuss that and then put those, those, those maps online to review that. I think that'd be something we can support very easily.
Agreed.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Council Cook?
I, I was going to add, if we schedule a work session, this might be an opportunity to also schedule a public dialogue session.
Oh, yeah.
Discuss that.
Let's do that. Plenty of place to spread us out within the community campus. Have a public dialogue session. Okay. Public, public dialogue, work session at a time in the future. We won't pick a date right now, but is the motion and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's see. Well, I would simply like to call out Attorney Moro has done a fantastic job here tonight. Thank you for us night up on the dais. Small applause.
Quiet. Like golf applause.
Quiet, quiet golf applause. So.
Thank you.
Good job and, you know, here's to the next 40 years.
Move to drink.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, Portsmouth.